Well, good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
And happy Tuesday to you. Today is Tuesday, July 11th, and we're in the Assembly Hall here in the heart of Old Town Conyers and want to say welcome to our Board of Commissioners meeting, as we call our meeting to order this morning. We have a full and robust agenda today and have a lot of bright faces and I see a lot of commissioners, I see a lot of young people.
I know.
I'm just gonna celebrate the young people.
Absolutely.
Let's give an applause for the young people being here, yes.
That would include me.
We get super excited when young people showing interest in civics and when parents and teachers and community leaders and bring our young people out to expose them to how some all this stuff works and comes together. So, thank you for being here. We're gonna, as I say, call our meeting to order this morning. We'll start with the pledge of allegiance and the invocation by our very own good friend, Reverend Walter Brown from the Good Hope Baptist Church. Reverend Brown, come on up and lead us in prayer, sir. Yes, sir.
Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
I'd like, first of all, let's give honor to our Lord and Savior, Jesus Christ.
Amen.
And our Father, which art in heaven. Father, we thank you for this day. We thank you for a day we never seen before, Father. We thank you for a day we never see again. And Father, as I stand here, Father, we know that Jesus is God that looks so high and looks so low. And then, Father, I'd like for you to look over the one that's in office. Blessed are those that have authority, Father, all over this land, wherever they may be. And Father, we thank you for guiding us and leading us up and down these dangerous highways. And Father, there's nothing much we can do but to pray. And as I stand here, I wanna pray for everybody. And Father, as we go through this board meeting today, Father, I just ask you to give us an open mind. As we go through this section, we wanna thank you in your son, Jesus' name, amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, my nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Reverend Brown, for leading us in our invocation. It's always a treat to have you come out and join us at our board meeting. You're definitely not a stranger here. We appreciate the good work that you and your team are doing all over Rockdale County. We said all the time, no one gets anything done. Y'all give Pastor Brown a round of applause. Moving right along, we do have several, several special recognitions this morning, and I'm gonna try to make sure that we stay on track and follow in order, so y'all back me up in case I get sidetracked here this morning. We're starting with the wonderful folks and the wonderful, we're really excited about this one, Heritage High School Girls Track Team Recognition. Director Redmond, come on up and give us the good news of what's going on over at Heritage High School.
Good morning, Chairman.
Yes, sir.
Good morning, Madam Commissioners.
Good morning.
You are correct, Chairman, there is some good news going on at Heritage High School. We want to recognize Heritage High School Track Team this year. They are the new rock champions of Rockdale County. That deserves a round of applause. Before we continue, I just want to acknowledge the principal of Heritage High School. Oh, we'll have the video first. Okay. I just wanted to acknowledge, in attendance today, the principal of Heritage High School, Dr. Richardson. The athletic coordinator or director for the county, Dr. Rose. And Heritage High School's athletic director, Mr. Dorian Powell Harris. As you saw in the video, and it went kinda fast, but it's a big deal, the 4x200 team won first place in the state, the 4x100 team placed in the top five of the state, the 4x14 team placed in the top eight in the state, Ms. Jada Bugs, who runs the 400, placed fifth overall in the state, and Heritage High School came in third overall in the state again, which is a big gift.
Wow.
And we also want to bring recognition that two of the athletes received track scholarships as well.
Oh, wow.
So, you guys will come up, come up, come on up, don't be shy. Y'all running in front of everybody, don't be shy now.
We didn't do a proclamation for him?
You guys come on up, we will get a photo worth the recognition. We have Mr. Powell Harris up for some remarks, unexpectedly. I love it, alright. Good morning, everybody.
Good morning.
So, it is a pleasure to be here today. I see so many familiar faces, of course, the Chairman and Commissioner Washington, H. Sanders, how are you? Director Holmes, it's so good to be here today. But it's not about me, it's about these athletes that put in the work this season. They had a lot of things that they had to face with an uphill battle, but I think they deserve another round of applause for pushing through and making it happen. I also want to give special recognition to our head girls' track coach, which is Mr. Russell Thomas, the mastermind behind the success. And we hope to be back next year with the state trophy.
Amen.
Alright, thank y'all again.
Very good, very good. Very good. Very good. Very good. Let's give another round of applause. We take upon a privilege, Commissioners, to highlight the athletic director got his start moving through the campus of Rockdale County. Stand up so they can see you again, give another round of applause, absolutely, yes. We're always proud of young people who are able to matriculate from one area of their career to another area and really find their niche. And the fact that he's landed a position that really meets his calling over at Heritage High School, that says a whole lot about you, but we brag about the fact that you started right here with us in Rockdale County. Give him another round of applause. Absolutely. So, next up, I believe, we now have a wonderful proclamation as relate to our Water Resources Department this morning, and Director Peak and his team, come on up and we're gonna move forward with this next one. We have the leadership of our Water Department. Let me just say this, because I wanna make sure I read this one, Commissioners, nice and slow, that everybody can, this is a big deal for us, because it's very seldom we have people who have been dedicated to our community in such a way, have made major strides all throughout the leadership and the government of Rockdale County. And I'm gonna read this proclamation, I'm super excited. By the Board of Commissioners, a proclamation, whereas Rockdale County is honored to recognize Ms. Wanda Lester for her service to Rockdale County for more than 25 years and nearly 30 years in water service, that deserves a round of applause right there by itself. Whereas Ms. Lester started working in the City of Conyers Water Department in 1994, where she held roles of accounting clerk, customer service representative, and customer service supervisor. Whereas she began her career with Rockdale Water Resources in January of 1997, after purchased from the City of Conyers in December of 1996. So, the Water Department transitioned from the city to the county during those years. She held several positions with RWR, including business operations manager, asset manager, superintendent of water and sewer operations, customer service manager, administrative manager, water and wastewater systems operations manager, utility operations compliance manager, and utility service division manager. And whereas Ms. Lester is a licensed water distribution operator and wastewater collection system operator, she is also pipeline, lateral, manhole assessment certified, and in her words, a survivor of RWR by the grace of God. And whereas she is a DeKalb Tech College graduate with a diploma in computer operations and is a native of Rockdale County, her passion is helping others and she volunteers in local organizations and several ministries at the church she attends. And whereas she has been married to her husband, to Nick, for 40 years, that's another round of applause right there. And they have two adult sons who have beautifully extended their family. She enjoys spending her time and traveling, and she is looking forward to doing just that following her retirement. And whereas Rockdale County shares in the excitement of Ms. Lester's career accomplishments and extends well wishes as she enters into a well-deserved retirement, now therefore, we, the members of the Rockdale County Board of Commissioners, are pleased to proclaim July 11th, 2023, in Rockdale County as Ms. Wanda Lester Appreciation Day. Join me in giving a round of applause. Commissioners, I'm gonna yield to her current director as we present this proclamation to Ms. Lester. I'm gonna also ask her partner for 40 years, Nick, to hand that camera to somebody else and come on up here and stand with your wife. Give them another round of applause as he's making his way, absolutely. Director, you've been working with Ms. Lester now for a little while.
One year.
And I'm sure with all of her credentials and her background and knowledge here in Rockdale County between here and the City Water Department back then, she probably could tell you a thing or two.
Absolutely.
I'm gonna yield to you so you can share your experience with Ms. Lester.
Ms. Lester, I just wanna say thank you and congratulations on your retirement. I've been working with Ms. Lester for one year. I've been here one year, and I tell you, I call on Ms. Lester every single day. And when I call on Ms. Lester, Ms. Lester is there to answer my call. And I appreciate it. I appreciate everything you've done for me for the one year, I appreciate everything you've done for Rockdale County for over 20 something years, and definitely for Rockdale Water Resources. So, thank you and congratulations.
Deputy Director Jamison, who now serves as our Deputy Director of Water Customer Service. Director, I remember the day you told me. Mr. Chairman, I'm getting all my training from Wanda Lester. Come on up and tell us about your experience.
Well, good morning, everyone. It's certainly bittersweet for me, you know, coming from the natural gas industry, when I came here in Rockdale County, there were some things I just didn't know, and there were two people I called on. It was Curtis Brooks and Ms. Wanda Lester. Wanda Lester has been just a well of knowledge. Wanda is a straight shooter. If you don't wanna hear the truth, then don't ask Ms. Wanda Lester. And I absolutely appreciate that about her, because you know exactly what you're gonna get. And every time I've had an opportunity, I didn't know something in the field, I can call on Wanda Lester, she would answer the phone, she'd give it to me straight, and I'd take it and bake it and make sure that we could execute it. So, this is bittersweet for me, because I miss that opportunity now to call on somebody when I just need an answer. Someone, as you talked about, Executive Director Rutledge, who knows where all the bones are buried. Wanda Lester knows exactly where all the bones are buried, and we're gonna miss her, but we're gonna certainly give her a big, big congratulations on having the opportunity to travel and enjoy her life with her family. Thank you.
So, Ms. Lester, again, outside of the words that are on the proclamation, on behalf of the Board of Commissioners, and all of the Rockdale County employees and all of Rockdale County residents, we're certainly gonna miss you. Congratulations, super outstanding. However, we still have your address in our database, and we know how to get there, and if we need to dispatch the sheriff to go get you, so we can get you back on board, Sheriff, can you help us with that if need be? Alright, very good. Give another round of applause, thank you so much. Commissioners, we're operating in a day and time where good people are hard to find.
Amen.
And when you get good people who are dedicated, who will stick with you through thick and thin, they're hard to find, and we have to celebrate those people, and not only all of the positions that Wanda has held in RWR, but she's been a teacher and a trainer and a mentor to so many of our employees, even in other departments. One more last time, y'all give Wanda Lester a round of applause. We certainly appreciate you, Wanda. Alright, next up, we have the, wow, it's another, I mean, this is a day of excitement. We have another one, 2023 Service Awards, 20 years, 25 years, 35 years of service with Rockdale County. Our Executive Director, Tony Holmes, is gonna do the honors. She and her staff.
Good morning, Chairman, Madam Commissioners.
Good morning.
Good morning.
We are super excited this morning. Again, we talked about Ms. Lester and her service again, congratulations, Wanda. This morning, we're gonna be recognizing employees that have reached the milestone years of service of 20, 25, and even 35 years of service, those employees who have reached that milestone between January 1 of this year and June 30 of this year. So, we will go ahead with our list here, and we're going to start with, give me just a second. We're gonna start with the video.
Alright.
Okay, I'll let the video play, and then we will go ahead and call them up. 25 years of service on our screen for Ms. Jennifer Perry. Uh-oh. Our executive leader, executive leadership team, Executive Director Barkley, 25 years of service. Darlene Mitchell, 25 years of service from our juvenile court. Matt Rogers, he's here, supervisor, 25 years of service. Judge Stacy, Associate Magistrate Court Judge, she's not here this morning, but 25 years of service. And then we have a 35-year. And that is Mr. Edward Higdon from our Sheriff's Office, Investigator Higdon, 35 years of service. Thank you for the video, we will call them up, and we're actually gonna hear comments from their supervisors this morning, so the individuals that are here definitely wanna take that opportunity and recognize them. So, we will start with first, our 20 years of service, and that is going to be Investigator Jennifer Perry from the Rockdale County Sheriff's Office.
But I'm here on her behalf.
Yes, he walked up and said, as we can tell, he's not Jennifer Perry.
We definitely know that he's not Jennifer.
So, we will present this and definitely take a photo with you, and if you would wanna make any comments on behalf of the prosecutor, okay?
Jennifer Perry and I have worked together now for the past two years in the Office of Professional Standards. Of course, y'all know she's worked for 20 years total with the Sheriff's Office. She served with pride and integrity, she's a great example of the Sheriff's Office. She's had to see some of the worst things that human beings could possibly provide, and she's been able to step through it. So, I think she's a great example to this county, to our agency as well, too. I think she's brought great pride to the sheriff himself. So, with that being said, I hope soon as I get back and see her, I'm gonna see if I could push for another five, so. I know she wishes she could be here, and she's grateful for what y'all done so.
Well, we're grateful for her as well, let's give her a round of applause.
Alright, we're now gonna move on to our 25 years of service, and we are recognizing four individuals with 25 years of service. The first up, and I'm gonna have him come up here, which is my neighbor, so we share a building, it's Executive Director Will Barkley. He has been with Rockdale County for 25 years, ladies and gentlemen. Executive Director Barkley.
Thank you. So, we're gonna have you make some comments, everyone take a picture.
Yes, we are.
I'm gonna have you turn your resume on.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I guess it's never a quiet moment in Rockdale where you don't have to get up and make a statement or give a speech. One of the things I wanna say this morning, just today, I appreciate the opportunity of being here in Rockdale. Back in 1996, I decided to make Rockdale County the home for my family. And after making that my home, I decided to work for Rockdale County in 1998. I started out in the Finance Department, and I was actually enjoying the opportunity that I was having there, and I got a chance to move over to the Assessors Office. Had no idea exactly what they did in the Assessors Office, but as I came in, I had the opportunity to learn from someone who had a lot of experience. So, I relished that opportunity to just to learn and grow, and just to be a part of the county and just have a, play a role that plays a major impact as far as in the future of Rockdale. So, one of the things that I'm still gonna be heavily involved as far as in how the county is shaped, I think it's important that we look further down the road, so I just love having that opportunity to have, to be able to put a, I guess, a footprint or just a stamp on how the county is going to be 25 years down the road. And I just love the fact that the county is very welcoming, also, they love to give you the opportunity for training. So, I relish all those things, because if you wanna grow, this is the place to come. You can grow in Rockdale if you truly wanna grow. So, if you wanna work and grow and not expect anything to be handed to you, this is the place to be. So, thank you for the opportunity.
You, alright, oh, purple, 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 look out there.
Executive Director Holmes, can I just say?
Yes, Chairman.
I just have to take, Commissioners, the liberty to say a few words about Executive Director Will Barkley, as you know, is the lead in our Tax Assessors Office. You heard him talk about his career transitioning from the Finance Department to the lead over now in our Tax Assessors Office. Over the last couple of years, Executive Director Barkley has also become a part of the executive leadership of Rockdale County, who helped navigate all of the movements for this county as a whole. So, he's serving in two or three different roles and capacities to make sure that we are moving the county in the direction that it needs to go. Also, we like to describe Director Barkley as the quiet stone, because one thing about Executive Director Barkley, he doesn't talk just to be talking, he gets the job done, he always reminds us that numbers don't lie, and his heart is in Rockdale County. Y'all give him another round of applause. Thank you.
Alright, next up, another 25 years of service, and this is going to be, I'm gonna go ahead and call her Darlene, some of you may know her by her cupcakes, some of the other things that she does here in Rockdale County, but she's been here for 25 years in the juvenile court, Ms. Darlene Mitchell.
Yes.
So, I am a woman of a few words. I believe in working behind the scenes and not out front, but I've always tried to pattern my life after a quote from Les Brown that I heard many years ago, to provide more service than you get paid for, and that's what I try to do every day.
Oh, wow, I love it. Darlene Mitchell is a staple in Rockdale County government, not just for her cupcakes, but she is certainly a voice and a presence, and I'm sure that if Judge Wood was here, she'd be sharing, and not only Judge Wood, but all of those that work in the Judicial Center next door at our courthouse would tell you the value and what an asset Darlene Mitchell is. Give Darlene another round of applause.
And, Mr. Chairman, the next two individuals are not here, but we definitely still wanted to acknowledge them, and I mentioned Judge Stacy with the magistrate court for 25 years, and also Judge Garland Moore, magistrate court for 25 years, so we can give them a round of applause as well. Okay, and this next person has been with Rockdale County for 35 years.
Wow.
So, and we do have the Sheriff's Offices here, and they're gonna be speaking on his behalf as well, but at this time, we would like to invite up Investigator Edward Higdon, if I pronounced that correctly.
Come on up, Investigator, give him a round of applause.
That's the shadow box, so you get all of the panels. Yes, from five all the way up to 35.
You have a 40-year?
Yeah. And that's your 35-year panel there as well. So, we're gonna let you make some comments, and then we're gonna slide it off with it.
Well, it's been a long time. Started here when I was 20 years old, and it's been a pleasure working with the Sheriff's Office, and started with Sheriff Vic Davis, and I guess I finished with Sheriff Eric Levitt, so it's been a treat, but not done yet, got a year or two left, so. Oops, sorry. Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. I'm gonna drop it again. You gonna make this old man bend over or pick it up?
He doesn't wanna stay with you.
Oh, lordy.
So, really quick, for the Water Department, if it makes you feeling it better, I have received some of those calls from Ms. Wanda Lester. She's known me for a very, very long time, I've known her practically all my life, so job well done, and congratulations, you deserve that, this day. By the way, I went to mandate school in 1994. Gene Higdon, Gino, Gino is what we call him around the office, he's been with us 35 years. Chairman, you said it earlier about dedicated employees, it's hard in any entity to find an employee to stay around for 35 years. We are now seeing employees retiring out at 20 years, and so, Gene, you've done 35 years enough, you've done a good job. Gene does one of the most tedious jobs in the agency, and that is, he's an investigator that monitors sex offenders. And, you know, to have those type of individuals come before you and to talk to them, sometimes there are sad situations, and that's what he does. He's done many, many things within the Sheriff's Office, but I guess he's gonna end his career still as a sex offender investigator, because I cannot get him to take the supervisory test to move up as a supervisor. But as he retire, one of these days, I hope no time soon, he has allowed his son to come work for us, who is doing an outstanding job, so he's following his dad's footsteps, and I know he's done an excellent job for us, so he and his wife has raised a good son, and he's just carrying out the rest of your days when you do decide to retire. But Gene, when I was in his floor around 13, 14 years of age, I used to go out and ride with- I used to go out and ride with various deputies out there. And Gene was one of the deputies that trained me when I was in Explorer. And he probably even trained me, I believe, when I actually went out on the road. Because I think you transferred out of jail. What year was that? In 90, I started in jail in 93. So he did some work with me out on the street. So thank you for all your 35 years of dedication serving the citizens of Rockdale County, but more importantly, our agency. So thank you. Really quick. Oh, real quick, for Jennifer Perry, Investigator Perry is an investigator over our Office of Professional Standards. For those of you who may not be familiar, that is a division that investigates the integrity of our employees and of our agency. And it protects the integrity of our agency, including serving and protecting the citizens of Rockdale County. And that, too, is another challenging job to have one of your own that is accused of any type of allegations that she has to go, and she may have worked very closely with and responded on calls, and they backed each other up to ask them certain questions and to really investigate them as if they are someone that has been, has actually committed a crime. And oftentimes, they find facts on these employees, and they have to deliver some unpleasant news. And one thing that I can tell you, that she will get to the bottom of any type of allegations, and she will clear employees of any type of allegations if she needs to clear them. So that's a hard job, and we appreciate her 20 years with the sheriff's office. We hope that we can squeeze five plus more years out of her. She does a great job. She is another one that will not take that test to become a supervisor, but she does a great job with the sheriff's office. Never complains, that I hear of, and she comes to work and do her job. So we thank Jennifer Perry for her dedication to the citizens of Rockdale County and our agency.
Thank you, Sheriff. Thank you. All right. Chairman and Madam Commissioners, we just recognized seven individuals for service. Can we give them another round of applause? All right, thank you, thank you. This next part of our presentation is to recognize those individuals that have, I'm sorry, completed through our career development, our training program. So these individuals have either completed degrees. They've either completed diplomas or certifications through the Rockdale County Career Academy, either through our tuition reimbursement program. So we're excited, and I know Executive Director Barkley mentioned that, that this is an environment where we truly believe in training and development. So at this time, we would like to recognize those individuals. I am going to go ahead and call them up. One of my favorite songs. Yes. We will go ahead and get started. The NACO's High Performance Leadership Academy, it's a master certificate. It is a 12-week-long program, and I can speak to that because I have participated in it. Commissioner Washington has participated in it. Commissioner Williams is going to be participating in it this year. So we're excited, definitely worthwhile in terms of developing your leadership abilities. The first person I want to call up is Chief Sue Sanders, who was part of my cohort. The next person we're going to call up is Executive Director Rutledge, also part of my cohort from NACO High Performance Leadership Academy. The next person we want to call up is Director Brian Kelly from R.D., NACO High Performance Leadership Academy. This next individual, I'm not sure if he is present, but we're going to go ahead and acknowledge him, and that is Willie Freeman with Parks and Recreation. Mr. Freeman has completed an associate's degree here in Rockdale County. So congratulations. This next person we're going to call up is Ahava Peters, for completing the Rockdale Georgia Lab Analyst and Georgia Water Class III exams. So Ms. Ahava Peters. Congratulations. This next person up, and we had three people do Leadership Rockdale, and all three of them are here. One of them we recognized earlier, but this next one, Ms. Olandria Bean, our Leadership Rockdale completion for us. Most recent class. Next one up, NACO's High Performance Leadership Academy, master certificate. I believe she had a closing speech at our graduation when we did this with NACO. That's Ms. Lisa Chester. She spoke on behalf of Rockdale County. And this next person up, our very own Tax Commissioner, completed a master's in public administration and certificate of management leadership and decision sciences from Harvard University, was Tisa Smart Washington. This next person, that would be Executive Director Tony Holmes. We're completing the NACO High Performance Leadership Academy Master Certificate. Ms. Claire Harris, Fire Rescue. She just completed the National Registry Emergency Medical Technician Exam. First try out the gate. She passed it. Congratulations. This next person up, we've already called her up and recognized her for her years of service. That's Ms. Darlene Mitchell. She actually completed Leadership Rockdale. Darlene Mitchell as well. Classmate. And this next person, who also completed Leadership Rockdale. So these are our three classmates together. That's going to be Mrs. Andrea Lee. That's the chairman's right hand.
Oh, yeah.
And this next one from our water department, Ms. Tracy Miller. If she can come on up. And Ms. Miller, I'm sorry, I want to make sure I recognize everybody for what they have completed. This is a huge accomplishment as well. Successful completion of a bachelor of science degree in business administration management from Western Governance University. Congratulations. So Chairman and Madam Commissioners, this is your 2023 class, if you will, of our completed certificates, diplomas, degrees. We have master's degrees, associate's degrees, as well as bachelor's degrees as go around. So again, congratulations on your achievement. We look forward to many, many more achievements with Rockdale County.
Let's give them another round of applause.
Chairman, I have one more.
Transition take place.
All right. So this is a special one. So this person gets to be recognized now separately from everybody else. So this makes it even more special. So this is someone with our years of service. And I've mentioned it earlier and wanted to make sure that we had an opportunity to recognize him as well. Parks and Recreation, 25 years of service, Mr. Matthew Rogers, also known as Matt Rogers. That for you, and then, Matt, you want to make any comments?
No, I just want to say thank you. It's been a pleasure working here. I've been in Parks and Recreation my whole life, so I worked for California for 10 years, and I came here, worked under Director Sue. And it's been fun, and working for Director Redmond's been a blast, too. So thank you.
Well, thank you.
Thank you, thank you, thank you. All right.
Let's give them another round of applause.
Another round of applause. All right, Mr. Chairman, I have one more presentation from Talent Management. And so this morning, we're going to be talking about our wellness initiatives from your wonderful wellness program here in Rockdale County. I am going to bring up Bianca Mallory Thompson to talk a little bit and introduce her team under the wellness initiative. So Bianca.
Good morning, Madam Commissioners and Chairman. Bianca Mallory Thompson Wood, the Department of Talent Management. This morning, I get the pleasure of introducing our wellness team. Since I've been here these past seven years, I've seen the wellness program evolve tremendously. And with the team that we have today, I definitely agree that it's going to continue to grow over the years. So I would like to introduce Mr. Ekoria Walker, our Benefits and Wellness Specialist, and Ms. Ann Eskrow, our Health Coach.
Good morning, Chairman.
Good morning.
Madam Commissioners. I'm Ekoria Walker, the Benefits and Wellness Specialist here for Rockdale County. Like to talk about my background before I get started. I served in the United States Navy for 20 years. And during my time in the military, I was a tactical air controller and a command fitness leader. After retirement in 2019, I re-enrolled in college and completed my master's degree in HR. I've been in Rockdale County for a year and a half, and my job duty is to plan and coordinate the Rockdale County Wellness Program. Here in Rockdale County, we focus on five areas, and that's your healthy eating, sleeping habits, physical activity, mental wellness, and financial wellness.
Hi, and I'm Ann Herndon Eskew. Good morning. And I've spent the last, or I've spent about 25 years in the marketing and project management world, and then had a big career shift and spent about two years getting my nationally board-certified health and wellness coaching license. And then I've been here in Rockdale County for the last five months or so and just loving what I do here. I love the wellness program that they have laid a fantastic foundation. Some of the things I've been working on with employees are stress management, sleep issues, blood pressure, that kind of thing. Next slide.
For 2023, our wellness theme is E3, which means empower, engage, evolve. We want to empower our employees by letting them know they are understood, they are valued, and they are appreciated. We empower them by encouraging them to become a better version of themselves. We empower them by motivating them to attend our fitness classes, our learnty learns, our webinars, and our wellness activities. We engage our employees. We have conducted training with the departments. We've done one-on-one coaching. We have provided employees with the tools they need to succeed. Evolve, these are the changes. We have helped employees evolve physically, financially, and mentally. We have, I'm sorry. We have helped employees adapt to a healthy eating lifestyle and a more active lifestyle. And later on in the presentation, I will share success stories on how the employees have evolved. Next slide.
So some of the topics for engagement that I've been working on with employees are, like I had mentioned earlier, the blood pressure and physical activity, healthy eating, smoking cessation, medication management. I'm like, come on, take those meds. And so to reiterate what Ekoria was saying, with empowering the employees, I work on encouraging them to make behavioral changes that they're comfortable with, and they make those changes on their terms. And engaging, I engage with the employees one-on-one for coaching sessions, and I try to, hope to gain their trust, and then also understand what's motivating them for this particular change that they're working on. And then finally, to watch them evolve as the employees slowly make their changes. Their health begins to evolve, giving them more energy and motivation to continue on their health journey. And the departments that Ekoria and I have both visited, just to name a few, are the 911 operators, the finance department, all three shifts of the fire department, the sheriff's office. I've done some webinars for them. And so I'm trying to meet the needs that are individual to each department. And like, for instance, at the NEO that we have every week, I have a game of true faults that I play with the employees. So they really understand what a health coach can do for them, and also what I won't do, that I won't tell them what to do, but so to hope, engage them to make some changes. Next slide.
Our Mental Health First Aid Program, we partner with National Council on Mental Wellbeing. We held eight training sessions. Four of those training sessions were in person and four were virtual. We had 233 employees that attended those trainings. Our Mental Health First Aid Program provided employees with the knowledge and understanding of what mental health is, how to identify someone who's experienced a mental health issue, how to assist someone who's experienced a mental health issue. Rockdale County have an EAP program that's available to all employees. Employees can also seek further assistance through their medical providers. The Mental Health First Aid Program also gave the basic knowledge of how to identify and common risk factors of someone who's experiencing anxiety, depression, and substance use. Next slide. These are the completed events so far for quarter one to quarter two of 2023. We had 963 employees that have participated in our wellness events. Quarterly, we hold our nutritional cooking classes, our blood drive. We completed several financial workshops. We had a six-week stealth challenge. Monday, Tuesdays, and Wednesday, we hold fitness classes. We completed a weight loss challenge. We had a total of 200 pounds that were lost between all employees. Next slide. Accompanying events for the next, for quarter three, we have a self-care bingo. We have Kaiser 5K, other Race Against Violence 5K, other Wellness Fair. For quarter four, we have a flu clinic, we have biometric screenings. We have a six-week maintained weight. Next slide. These are various photos of wellness events that we participated in. We have the photos of the fitness classes, our nutritional cooking classes, 5K, our mental wellness pottery painting class. Next slide. These are the results that were shared from Anthem and Kaiser's. Healthy. We have 52% of employees are healthy. When I say healthy, that means they're not at risk of any chronic disease. The chronic disease consists of cancer, diabetes, and hypertension. Knowing their numbers, we have 87% of employees who are getting their blood pressure checked. They're checking their vital signs. And staying up to date on their screening, we have 80% who are going to their cancer screenings, who are getting their flu shots, doing their biometrics, and keeping up with their cholesterol. Next slide. These are success stories from how employees have evolved. For our fitness class, we have employees who lost 23 pounds. Employees who gained their confidence. They show increased energy, improved mood, and their sleep. Our cooking class, employees that learned how to cook, used healthier choices. And they enjoy interacting with different employees from departments while they learn to cook healthy. Next slide.
She said, "The coaching I've received has helped me focus on the goals that encompassed my work experience, my physical health, and has increased sleep," which I always love to hear. And then another employee was telling me how she finds the wellness coaching so engaging that it's given her the confidence and encouragement that she needed to restart her weight loss journey. And it's also made her feel very accountable, as well as acknowledging the choices that she makes now. They are not just blind choices, she's thinking about what she's doing now. Thank you. Next slide. Any questions?
I don't have any questions. Let's give them a round of applause. Commissioners, this is the team that is saving the lives of our employees behind the scenes. When you're talking about promoting wellness and health and mental wellness, then they're also focusing on financial wellness. Our employees in Rockdale County has multiple options in terms of how to up-level their skills through talent management, but also how to live healthy. I'm going to yield a Commissioner Washington, your thoughts, Commissioner?
This is outstanding. It's another one of those benefits that our employees have. You know, we definitely can't pay as much as the private sector, and we try to do as much as we can internally to make sure that our employees have some kind of compensation outside of monetary. So I think these things, and I've participated in several, are outstanding, and so I commend you all, and I look forward to participating in even more.
Commissioner Williams?
So I think anytime we can engage people in wellness activities is a really, really good thing. It's something I'm always aware of, not always doing it, but always aware of what I should be doing. And so I always appreciate the encouragement to get involved and to stay engaged. And so I appreciate your work. I was excited about the mental health first aid piece. 233 is employees who are trained. That is amazing. That is just amazing. That is a skill to learn that is so valuable and can save lives. So thank you so much for your work.
Thank you.
Go ahead, Mrs.
I just wanted to say, a lot of people ask why wellness, and I do thank you all for allowing the wellness program here in Rockdale County, because throughout the presentation, you heard engaging, empowering, and evolving, and that's what wellness is basically, to encourage employees to make those small changes that lead to bigger lifestyle changes. So that's why we do wellness.
Thank you so much, and thank you for everything you do on behalf of our employees. Give them another round of applause. Executive Director Holmes, I believe you all did have a delegation that represented us at the Peachtree Road Race this year, is that correct? Tell us about being in the spirit of healthy and wellness and thank you.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, that photo he had up there, that was myself and Ekoria, that was the Kaiser 5K. This particular time, the Peachtree Road Race is always held on July 4th, and we participate, we have a group of employees that we train, we give them fitness classes and get them in preparation to be able to do an actual 10K. So I don't know who has ever done the Peachtree Road Race, and if you have survived cardiac heel, or Rockdale County has survived cardiac heel, and we're very pleased that we had a number of employees come out and participate again this year. So every year, we will be engaging, making sure that our employees are actively participating in those initiatives. So thank you again.
Well, thank you, and thank you, your department and your team, your entire team, doing a fantastic job from the area of career development and health and wellness. Let's give them another round of applause.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on, we have item number E. It's Rockdale, okay, we've taken care of that. I think we're rocking and rolling now.
On to approval of the agenda.
All right. Commissioners, item number four, approval of the agenda, what is your pleasure?
I move to approve the agenda as published.
I second that motion.
It's been properly motioned and seconded. Are there any, is there any comments or questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Next item, please.
It's approval.
Approval of the minutes from June 27, 2023. Commissioners, what's your pleasure?
I move to approve the minutes as presented.
I second the motion.
It's been properly motioned and seconded. Are there any questions or comments? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. There's no unfinished business, and there is no consent agenda today. We're going to move right on into the regular agenda, starting with item number 2023-326.
Okay, item 326 is with SBA Monarch Towers LLC as the tenant. Through the Finance Department, this is a tower site land lease at 4089 Troop Smith Road. This is for fire station number two. Change order number two to contract 2003-89. This is a price increase from $1,000 per month to $2,000 per month with the effective date July 11, 2025. It is to renew the lease terms and to include three additional successive terms of four years and a one-time payment of $25,000. This is revenue.
I move to approve this contract as presented.
I second that motion.
It's been properly motioned and seconded. Are there any comments or questions?
Well, I would just say that I spent a lot of time reading through all that stuff because I missed that one little word at the end that said revenue.
Revenue. That's a very important word.
Which I figured out by reading all the documents, but I could have saved myself some time.
Well, you did good, Commissioner. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Next item, please.
Item 327 is with Catalyst Courts and Land Records LLC, formerly known as Icon Software for the Clerk of Court's Office. This is for jury management software. It's change order number one to contract 2020-95 to add jury texting and vendor name change, $3,000 for the implementation fee, and $2,400 per year, and expires June 30, 2024.
I move to approve this contract as presented.
I second the motion.
It's been properly motioned and seconded. Are there any comments or questions?
So is this so that potential jurors can be contacted?
So, come on up, come on up now.
Yeah, no, it's okay.
Come on up, that's okay, come on up to the mic. We're glad you're here this morning, absolutely.
Yes, Janice is at a conference, so she can help me. My name is Shelley Hunter, I'm the Senior Court Accountant for the Clerk's Office. And yes, ma'am, it is to be able to text the jurors to let them know if they've been canceled or if they need to come in. We have a number they call currently, but people don't always call that, so if they provide and opt-in for the phone service, then we can text them individually so they don't have to call and find out.
That's awesome. Great. That's great.
Ms. Hunter, thank you for being here. Thank you so much. That's very good technology there to alert folks, and it really saves on time, absolutely. So we have a motion, seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Next item, please.
Item 328 is with Jalen Gilstrap and Friends through Parks and Recreation Department. This is for the Friday wind down. The amount is $1,500. The timeframe is July 14, 2023.
I move to approve the contract as presented.
I second that motion.
It's been properly motioned and seconded. Are there any comments or questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Next item, please.
Item 329 is with Jalen Gilstrap and Friends through the Parks and Recreation Department. This is for the Friday wind down, and the amount is $1,500. The date is August 25, 2023.
I move to approve this contract as presented.
I second the motion.
It's been properly motioned and seconded. Are there any comments or questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Next item, please.
Item 330 is a requisition through the General Services Department through the Fleet Division for Western Global. This is the emergency backup refueling system for generators and off-site fuel tanks. The amount is $19,885.
I move to approve this requisition as presented.
I second that motion.
It's been properly motioned and seconded. Are there any comments or questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Next item, please.
Item 331 is a requisition through the General Services Department for Atlas for Civil Engineering Services for pedestrian bridge repair at Lorraine Park. The amount is $37,000.
I move to approve this requisition as presented.
I second the motion.
It's been properly motioned and seconded. Are there any comments or questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Next item, please.
Item 332 is a requisition through the General Services Department for Praxis 3 Facility Planning per request of the DFAX. This is to provide renovation design for the tenant changes. The amount is $28,050.
I move to approve this requisition as presented.
I second that motion.
It's been properly motioned and seconded. Are there any comments or questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Next item, please.
Item 333 is a requisition through the General Services Department. This is for Yancey Power Systems for a generator Level 2 and annual service. The amount is $61,069.32.
I move to approve this requisition as presented.
I second it.
It's been properly motioned and seconded. Are there any comments or questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Next item, please.
Item 334 is a requisition through the General Services Department for Williams Fire Apparatus. This is for the emergency repairs to the pumper. The amount is $15,130.71.
I move to approve this requisition as presented.
I second that motion.
It's been properly motioned and seconded. Are there any comments or questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Next item, please.
Item 335 is a requisition through Technology Services for Southern Computer Warehouse. This is for nine Dell all-in-one computers and five Dell Latitude laptops. The amount is $21,426.73. This is host-funded.
I move to approve this requisition as presented.
I second the motion.
It's been properly motioned and seconded. Are there any comments or questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Next item, please.
Item 336 is an expenditure request through Quicket Solutions Technology Services Department. This is the annual subscription software for code enforcement and court solutions. The amount is $56,710.
I move to approve this expenditure request.
I second that motion.
It's been properly motioned and seconded. Are there any comments or questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Next item, please.
Item 337 is an expenditure request to Waley Food Services for the Sheriff's Office. This is for the condensing unit repair for the walk-in cooler. The amount is $15,357.34.
I move to approve this expenditure request as presented.
I second the motion.
It's been properly motioned and seconded. Are there any comments or questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Next item, please.
Item 338 is an expenditure request for flock safety through the Sheriff's Office. This is a lease of six Falcon flock cameras. The term is June 23, 2023, through June 24, 2024. The amount is $15,000.
I move to approve this expenditure request as presented.
I second that motion.
It's been properly motioned and seconded. Are there any comments or questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Next item, please.
Item 339 is a request for surplus of equipment from the Senior Services Division, from General Services, and from also General Services, but the Fleet Division.
I move to declare these items as surplus as presented.
I second the motion.
It's been properly motioned and seconded. Are there any comments or questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Next item, please.
Item 340 is the appointment of Michelle Irazari as the Chief Financial Officer for the Finance Department.
I'm, uh...
Come on up, Executive Director. Come on, come on up. We're going to, we'll yield to her when she comes up, absolutely.
We were rolling. We were rolling.
Some good theme music.
Yes.
Yes.
It's still be her theme music. Thank you. Chairman, Madam Commissioners, item 340 is the recommendation for the appointment of Michelle Irazari. I do want to share a little bit about her background, and then I want to bring her up as well to make some comments. So Michelle comes to us with over 22 years of experience in finance and county administration. She has a strong background in strategic planning, goal-setting, resource allocation, capital improvement planning, federal grant administration, as well as organizational change and development, just to name a few. Most recently, she is serving in the capacity of County Administrator for Merriweather County. She also has served as an Assistant County Manager for Spalding County, the County Administrator for the City of Stratham, as well as numerous financial positions for Gwinnett County and Northeast Georgia Regional Commission. Michelle holds a bachelor's degree in management. She has completed the ACCG Leadership Institute as a certified county official. She is also a certified local government finance officer for Levels 1 and 2. Michelle, I would like to bring you up here as well, so.
So we all have theme music, so value. This is yours.
Thank you, Executive Director Holmes. Chairman Nesbit, Madam Commissioner Williams, and Madam Commissioner Washington, thank you for this opportunity. I am looking forward to serving the citizens of Rockdale County, working close with the Board of Commissioners, and just moving forward. Thank you.
Well, welcome to Rockdale County, and let's give her a round of applause. Madam CFO, I'm going to ask you to stand there because we're going to take, we're going to do the official due diligence here, so hang tight as we go through this. Commissioners, what is your pleasure?
I move to approve this appointment as presented.
I second that motion.
It has been properly motioned and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Give her a round of applause. Welcome to Rockdale County.
Can I say that when I met with her for the first time, I was so excited. She was, had an amazing interview, but the thing that I enjoyed the most is that she started asking me questions to the point that I said, "When did I start applying for this job?" But what that said was that she was very engaged, trying to be clear on direction, our goals and objectives, so that she could start executing the vision. I think she, from my conversations with her, believes that all three of us are extremely, are visionaries, and she wants to make sure that we can smoothly execute those visions. So I'm super excited, super excited to have you here, and now you have your theme songs, so you should feel right at home.
Commissioner Williams?
I think the thing that, several things impressed me, but one, the first thing was, Michelle had done her research about Rockdale County, and she knew something about us before she came to the interview that I had with her. And to the point that she knew what I was, what initiatives I was working on. And so, you know, that, again, like Commissioner Washington said, says, you know, that she will help us get those visions that we have in a, at a good place financially. So thank you, we're welcome.
You know, as I stated earlier, it is difficult to find good people. We are in a very competitive workforce in this particular region, Rockdale County being one of the 11 counties that make up metropolitan Atlanta. So we don't take it for granted or take it lightly when we can land on qualified, competent talent that is interested in coming and being a part of Rockdale County. I also want to just take a moment, I think it's so fitting, Commissioners, that we highlight the great work of Terminus and Mr. David Corbin, who has kept the Bloodstain banner up on behalf of our Prime Minister. I move forward to say that Mr. Corbin and his team will continue to be on the ground, and they will continue to usher in our new CFO and be there to support her as we move forward throughout the remainder of this year and the days ahead. So welcome aboard, Madam CFO, Ms. Michelle, we thank you, and thank you, David, for you and your team for keeping up the great work here in Rockdale County. It's been a day of excitement, and it's just beginning, very good, I'm excited about it. So we have done our due diligence as it relates to our new CFO, and now we're ready to go to the next item.
Yes, we are. Okay, item 341 is policy amendment to Policy 2006-4-12 as amended, the holiday policy to include two additional employee holidays. include two additional employee holidays, President's Day and Indigenous Peoples' Day.
And before we move on that, Commissioners, I'm gonna ask the Executive Director to come up once again and talk about these two days. This has been a day of highlighting of the benefits of working for Rockdale County. You've seen employees with longevity from 20 years of service all the way to 25 years of service, a wonderful presentation from our Health and Wellness Team, which is the Vision of Talent Management, but now we've added two additional days to make sure we allow our employees to have the adequate amount of time off to spend with their families and to recognize those things that are important to them. Executive Director Holmes?
Yes, Chairman, Madam Commissioners, so yes, we actually did add two additional, they are actually federal holidays as well, so we're excited to be able to have them here in Rockdale County. Just a little bit of overview, Indigenous Peoples' Day is a holiday in the United States that celebrates and honors Indigenous American peoples and commemorates their histories and culture. That's also recognized on the second Monday of every October in the year, and President's Day is celebrated every year on the third Monday of February, and all of the Presidents in American history are remembered and honored for their work as well. So we did receive recognitions, and we listened to the employees and their comments and their suggestions. They mentioned and it came up before, it's the same thing we did when we had Veterans' Day, bringing that to Rockdale County, and just, it literally aligns with all of the federal holidays right now, so we're excited to have it as a benefit here for our employees.
Well, thank you so much, and let me say thank you to my colleagues, Commissioner Washington and Commissioner Williams, because it is the decision of this board that moves forward and allows for these additional days so that our employees can enjoy the time off with their families. As our workforce culture has continued to change, we have to evolve and make changes and make some adjustments to be able to attract and retain the kind of qualified talent that we need to get the job done day-to-day here in Rockdale County. So, thank you to Commissioner Washington and Commissioner Williams for being a part of the leadership decision to afford this opportunity for all of our employees. Thank you. Thank you both.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, next item.
Well, we need a motion and a vote.
All right, very good. Thank you, thank you. Commissioners, what's your pleasure?
I move to approve this policy amendment as presented.
I second the motion.
It's been properly motioned and second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries, very good. Next item.
All right, item 342 is rezoning case 2023-07, an ordinance to amend the official zoning district map of Rockdale County, Georgia as amended by rezoning 1952 Old Covington Highway from R1 to M1 to impose conditions upon the property to repeal conflicting ordinances and for other purposes. This is submitted for a first reading.
I move to approve the first reading and refer this ordinance to the Planning Commission.
I second that motion.
It's been properly motioned and second. Are there any comments or questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries, next item please.
All right, item 343 is rezoning case 2023-08, an ordinance to amend the official zoning district map of Rockdale County, Georgia as amended by rezoning 1816 Parker Road from C2 to RM to impose conditions upon the property to repeal conflicting ordinances and for other purposes. This is submitted for a first reading.
I move to approve the first reading and refer this ordinance to the Planning Commission as presented.
I second the motion.
It's been properly motioned and second. Are there any comments or questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries, next item please.
Item 344 is rezoning case 2023-09, an ordinance to amend the official zoning district map of Rockdale County, Georgia as amended by rezoning Northwest Ebenezer and Zero Highway 138 from AR to MRU to impose conditions upon the property to repeal conflicting ordinances and for other purposes. This is submitted for a first reading.
I move to approve the first read and refer this to the Planning Commission.
I second that motion.
It's been properly motioned and second. Are there any questions or comments? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. I believe Executive Director Rolich, we are down to board comment.
Public comment, yes. We have one that's been turned in.
All right.
So I'll go ahead and just read the disclaimer in case there's any others.
Maybe we'll get a few more while you're reading.
All right, thank you, Mr. Chairman. As a reminder, public comment is limited to three minutes per speaker. Comments relative to any issues that are currently going through the public hearing process, matters that are in active litigation, political campaigning, or partisan politics will not be heard in this meeting. Speakers are to address the chairman, not each other, or the audience, and are expected to conduct themselves in an appropriate manner. The use of abusive or profane language shall not be allowed. No debate or argument between speakers and/or members of the audience shall be permitted.
We have Ms. Pulliam. Come on up, Ms. Pulliam.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners.
Good morning.
I just wanted to introduce myself. My name is Corissa Pulliam. I'm a veteran, military veteran student of GMC, Georgia Military College. And I just want to say I like everything I've heard and seen here. I'm in the middle of moving right now, so I think I'm gonna become a resident of Rockdale. I love what I'm seeing. Also, I wanted to send greetings from Professor Louis Ward.
Yes, yes, yes.
That is all. You guys continue to do a great work. I love what you're doing, and thank you, it's a pleasure to be here.
Thank you, thank you for coming out this morning.
Thank you, thank you.
Oh, that was refreshing right there. Can y'all, give her another round of applause.
We need to roll that back. Could we get the clip? Could you send that to me by email, please?
Well, several things Ms. Pulliam shared in her comments. Number one, she's a student here at the Georgia Military College. She also is, has made herself a student watching the civic engagement here with this VOC meeting, and she talked about becoming a potential Rockdale resident. So, in all of what you said, it is refreshing because it's not often that folks that do the job that we do get positive comments or feedback, and we always take an extra moment to highlight it when that happens, and particularly when it's coming from young people, we really appreciate that. So stay tuned, stay involved. You hear there's a lot going on in Rockdale County, there's a lot to offer, and I'll just tell you, there's only two kind of people. Those that live in Rockdale and those that wish they live in Rockdale County. Give her another round of applause, y'all. So, in keeping in the spirit of so many wonderful things going on, I'm gonna start with Commissioner Washington with board comment. Commissioner?
Thank you. As a matter of fact, most of my comments are about things that have occurred or will be occurring. The first thing is that last week, all my days are running together, it was either last week or the week before, I did have the public portion of my housing forum, and it went over what I thought was very well. My intent was to start conversations about what's called the missing middle in housing, and the difference between what's affordable housing, what's low-income housing, what we have and what we need, so that we can start building a plan so that Rockdale County can be an inclusive county all the way around. That's one thing, when you go throughout this county, there's something for everybody in all walks of life in this county, and we want to make sure that we maintain that value here in this county. It's well-known that we were trying to increase the median income so that we can attract certain businesses, but we also have to create spaces for people who may not have that, but are our teachers, our doctors, our beginning doctors, our lawyers, our county workers, people who work hard and need a place to raise their family and have a quality way of life. So that's one of the things that hopefully the housing forum started those discussions. I would also like to give a thank you to the voices of Rockdale for attending that forum, even though at one point, the guests thought that they were being rude to them, even though it may have seemed at one point they were trying to take over the forum for their own agenda. I do believe that their presence, well, their presence was appreciated because at least they are heard, all of the presentation on affordable housing and the need for various types of housing, and they can start the conversations in that regard. The second thing is that I did have the opportunity to sit down with Dr. Oats for our second conversation about what's going on in Rockdale County schools, and we're gonna play a small portion of, the entire video is 17 minutes long, but it's 17 minutes worth of a lot of information, what's going on in Rockdale County schools regarding public safety and teacher retention. So it's called The Check-In, and The Check-In with Commissioner Washington and Superintendent Dr. Oats, Dr. Terry.
Hello, this is Commissioner Washington. Welcome back to another episode of The Check-In with me, Commissioner Washington. I am here today with Dr. Terry Oats, the School Superintendent for Rockdale County Schools. Today, we will be talking about student safety as well as teacher retention. Good morning, Dr. Oats.
Hello, how are you, Commissioner Washington?
Good. So welcome back. Let's talk a little bit about school safety.
We'll go to the next thing. Going back to housing, we are getting ready to have a NACA conference. It will be the 25th through the, is it 26th through the 28th of this month? I'm sorry? I'm sorry, the 28th through the 30th of this month. NACA is an organization that helps people that, to prepare them for homeownership. There's, it helps you understand the responsibilities of homeownership. It helps with, if you go through the program, you may qualify for no down payment, no closing costs, no fees. They help them get a better rate on their mortgages. So these are the kinds of things that will be discussed, and the entire program will be rolled off out July 28th through the 30th at Johnson Park. So I'm really hoping that a lot of people will come and take advantage of this opportunity to look at homeownership. There's no, are there income requirements?
And Commissioner Washington, can I, I want to commend you. Well, I want to jump in just to commend you because you worked very diligently leading this whole housing crisis and the issue surrounding homelessness, which is rapidly making its way to our region and to our area, but you've also pulled one of the most respected consultants that we're all familiar with. I'm gonna ask Ms. Teacher Carter to come on up at this time, because she's been working very diligently with the Commissioner, leading this effort, and this is a big deal for Rockdale County. We've seen NACA all over metro Atlanta in many, many years, but this is a first for Rockdale to be able to bring this. Ms. Carter, tell us what the work you've been working with Commissioner Washington on this project.
Absolutely, absolutely. Good morning, Chairman and Madam Commissioners. As the Commissioner just stated, we are super excited that the Rockdale County Board of Commissioners is hosting this NACA event. It will be July 28th through the 30th, as mentioned, from 8 to 6, and there is no income requirement, no credit needed. It really is an opportunity for those who may have been turned down in other situations to become homeowners. If you have any questions, you can go to www.naca.com or call 425-602-6222 to pre-register. If you don't have an opportunity to pre-register, you also can walk in on that day. If you come that day, you actually have an opportunity to leave and go find the house.
Wow.
It's just that comprehensive.
That's huge, and it's my understanding that you and the Commissioner have also collaborated with Director Redman. You're hosting this event over at Johnson Park. It's not just a one-day event, according to this flyer, this is a three.
Absolutely, absolutely. It's a three-day event. We already have over 3,000 people pre-registered to attend this event. We're super excited about the reception that has come already. Back in June, Newark, New Jersey hosted this event. They had over 30,000 in attendance over five days, and so we're so fortunate that the Board of Commissioners here in Rockdale County is bringing this event right here to Johnson Park Recreation Center at 1781 Ebenezer Road.
Well, again, Commissioner Washington, I have to pause because you've been leading the charge with this whole housing crisis and this conversation that we're having locally about the increasing number of homeless people here in Rockdale County. A program like this affords people an opportunity who never thought they could ever enter into homeownership. I'm proud of the fact that we're bringing this to Rockdale County because these types of programs have always been in bigger markets. The fact that we're gonna be able to do this for three days at one of our prized facilities, Johnson Park, is centrally located, and the parking will be able to address the large crowd. We're looking forward to a great event. Commissioner Washington, thank you for collaborating with myself and Commissioner Williams on this, and we're hoping that tons of Rockdale County residents come out and participate in this. When we talked with one of the lead people in NACA, they said, listen, Mr. Chairman, don't be surprised if you get a few people outside of Rockdale that decide to come out as well. Well, we're gonna take a point of privilege and be selfish for a moment. We want all of our Rockdale residents who are interested or in need, we want you to get in the line first. We're gonna take care of our Rockdale residents. Ms. Carter, thank you for your leadership, leading this as our project manager over this project and working very closely with Commissioner Washington.
Thank you. And the way that works is if somebody's in a, in a apartment, and they go to a home, then that opens up the apartment for someone who may need to transition to an apartment. So if somebody's in a four-bedroom home and they downsize to a two-bedroom, that now opens up that home to an apartment. So it's very important that we look at how all of the housing is interconnected, because like I would say, and I'll say every time, if you want economic development, you have to look at housing, because housing is where jobs go to sleep at night, and so we have to always keep those things in mind.
Yeah, I like the way you said the housing is where jobs go to sleep at night. That's absolutely right. That's where the talent has to lay down and rest.
Exactly. So the next, the next project is where State Representative Doreen Carter and I are hosting a farmer, a conversation with Georgia farmers, and it was going to be on July 27th, right before the housing forum. The, our state, Mr. Arthur Tripp, who is the State Executive Director of the USDA for Farm Services Agency in Georgia, will be here. The program is from 10 to 12 at JP Carr. This is something that I am passionate, have been passionate about for a couple of years, talking about agriculture in this county. I really would like to start a program so that we're teaching more subsistence, becoming more self-reliable, so I'm excited about this program with State Representative Carter. Like I said, it's gonna be July 27th from 10 to 2. There'll be sign-up information, because we kinda wanna see how many people, but that's on July 27th. And finally, the event everybody's been waiting for will be the luggage drive for children in need that are transitioning from home to, into foster care. That will be on August the 5th at the DFAX office in Conyers.
Here at the JP Carr Complex.
Right, at the JP Carr Complex.
Taylor Street.
On Taylor Street from 9 to 12, August the 5th. We want, I'm asking for new luggage, and if you can put some toiletries in it for those, for the children, that would be great. Also, we want new luggage, because last time we did new or gently used, and we got more than gently used, and I'll say it a million times, these children are already going through what will probably be one of the worst things in their lives, and we want them to have luggage that they can be proud of. The whole point is to keep them from, a lot of them have, are transitioning out of their house into, with trash bags, and we want to keep them out of trash bags. If you cannot make it to the luggage drive on August the 5th, drop it off here. Andre will get to the JP Carr Complex. Andre will get the, to, um, the JP Carr Complex. Um, he's also indicated that I, I can't breathe without him. He wanted me to let everybody know now that I cannot breathe without him, but...
We agree.
(laughing) He will, he will make sure that you all, these children, get the luggage. So if you can't make it to the luggage drive, um, please drop it off here and we'll make sure that we, um, um, take care of it. And I think that's all I have. Of course, Dr. Williams is going to remind me of something, so...
Dr. Williams?
So, thinking back about the last few weeks, um, first off, I hope many of you went to red, white, and boom. That is just, I have loved that since the very first year we did it. And it, you know, the first year, I thought, July third, that is so weird. Why are we not doing this on the fourth? And now, it's like, it's the perfect way to move into the fourth. Because then we were able to spend the whole fourth with our family.
Right.
And, you know, having a cookout or barbecue or whatever it is. And, um, you know, it, it's just, it's, it's just really nice. I liked it. I liked it. And the fireworks are phenomenal. So if you missed it this year, make sure you get there next year because, and it started to rain. Just stick it out because the rain cleared up and the fireworks came. And, um, they're spectacular. They really are. And it's a nice collaboration between the county and the city.
It really is.
In doing that. Um, speaking of the city, I, I think, um, you know, one of the things that has to do with the need for more housing is that along with that, we need things for people to do. And, um, the city has, has sold part of the horse park property to a sports, um, company that is talking about putting in a professional soccer stadium and training facility. And, um, and then along with that, there's talk of leasing or selling part of the property to Spooky Duck, which is a big sporting complex for families, for children, for adults, with, with all kinds of activities. And so I think that's gonna increase our need for housing. Um, and speaking of housing, then we've got, I appreciate what Tisha Carter has done with our NACA. And that's a great opportunity to, um, for first-time homebuyers, like she said, those that don't have any credit or don't have good credit. Uh, one of the little notes I noticed was that it was under-market value, which however much under-market it is, will be helpful because market value is, you know, more than it was a couple of years ago. So, um, thank you very much for your work. Um, I was, let's see, Sunday was the debutante orientation and, um, you know, those kinds of events are interesting to me to show how youth are being mentored and taught about community, about responsibility, about appropriate behavior and dress and etiquette. Um, it, it looked like a nice group of girls. They looked, um, a little unsure, I thought. And my, my thought was, wait till the end of the year. They will have a different look about them and they will have a confidence level, um, that they, they were hesitant to show on Sunday. Um, I also, in the last few weeks, had a number of meetings about transitional housing, from a landowner, real estate people, developers, to try to get, um, a plan. You know, you know, I'm a, I, I, I see things and see how I want them to be. And it's like their balls are all bouncing in the air. Well, the balls are still bouncing in the air on this one, but they're starting to come together and, um, you know, to coalesce a little bit. So I'm excited about that because we really have a deficit of housing needs for people transitioning out of prison, out of jail, out of, who are transitioning out of addiction into recovery. And, uh, you know, people just, they, they need a specific type of housing with supports in place. And that's what transitional housing is and does. And so, um, I, four or five come, meetings, I think, in the last two or three weeks about that. And so we're continuing to work on that and try to get that, something in place because we know that that is a desperate need. Um, that doesn't address the homeless issue. That's a whole nother issue. Somebody mentioned to me about, why doesn't Rockdale County have a shelter? And my, my comment was, usually it's a nonprofit that, that runs that kind of thing. So, you know, those are other conversations that we, as leaders in the community, can be encouraging other nonprofits or churches or whoever to think about, um, some kind of space. The, the county jumped in last winter with the warming centers and that worked pretty well. And I know last summer, they had some for the heat when it was really hot.
Cooling centers.
Yeah, cooling centers. Mm-hmm, cooling centers. But, um, you know, we also need some kind of space for people who, who need it all the time, who don't wanna sleep out in the rain, who don't wanna sleep outside. Um, and are there, and many people are there just by circumstance, not by choice.
Sure.
Um, and the last thing I really wanted to co-comment on was Darlene Mitchell's comment about, "Provide more service than you get paid for."
Yes, yes.
That was really impressive to me.
Yes, it was. Can we, let's give her a round of, she not even here. Go ahead, Commissioner. You, that one, I love that quote, so that, that one get me going, but go ahead.
Yeah, I, I wrote that down. Provide more service than you get paid for. That's, that's really the key to success, if you wanna call it success. You know, that confidence in yourself and that, um, you know, that, that knowing that you're doing more than is asked, that you're doing a good job. And of course, not only does it make you feel good and settle you, it, um, encourages your career development, your educational development, um, all of those things. So, provide more service than you get paid for. Or don't get paid for, but provide more service.
Absolutely. Well, thank you, uh, both Commissioners. Commissioner Washington, did you have any additional comments?
Um, I was told that the video is, is ready to roll.
All right, very good. Let's, let's yield to the video.
Can you discuss what safety measures are in place for Rockdale County schools?
Absolutely. Uh, we're very, very fortunate to have a multi-layered approach to addressing school safety here in Rockdale County Public Schools. And specifically, we articulated what we call multi-layered measures for safety enhancement. And those include obviously the safety vestibles that we constructed some time ago, where there's controlled access to each of our school facilities. In addition to that, we've upgraded our surveillance camera systems, uh, from the analog to the more advanced IP, uh, surveillance, which certainly aids in the safety of our facilities and our schools. But in addition to that, as you may know, we've put in place a clear backpack protocol. Uh, in addition to that, we actually have an open gate weapons detection system that we have deployed at all of our schools. And, uh, of course, we're also proud of the fact that we have a comprehensive epic crisis alert system, which is a way that classrooms can alert the central, uh, the, the central office, of course, but also the school office in the event that there's an emergency situation occurring anywhere in the building or on the ground. So we feel very strongly that we have been both effectively proactive, but also we've been responsive and reactive to, uh, safety, uh, here in Rockdale County Public Schools.
And all of the administrators and teachers have been trying to...
Absolutely. Now, what, we, we have a training system in place for all of those systems that I've shared with you. And yes, all appropriate staff have been trained.
What are you doing?
Well, it goes on to talk about, um, teacher retention, um, and, um, the, how to register your children for school if they're, if you're new to the county or if they're like KJ, who will be starting kindergarten this year.
Oh, that's amazing.
Yeah. So, um, if, I, I know this will be running on channel twenty-three and it'll be on our Vimo station, so hopefully everybody will tune in and watch.
Very good with Commissioner, uh, "The Check-In" is what it's called.
"The Check-In."
Keep up the good work with, uh, Dr. Oates and the Rockdale County Public Schools in giving us those updates. But we're providing insight in terms of how school system operates and what's his plan to, uh, continue to embrace, uh, the education both internally and externally of our young people throughout Rockdale County. We appreciate all of that you're doing in that area as well.
Well, thank you.
Yes. I, I do want to yield to Chief Sanders, he have a couple of other, uh, some of our directors want to highlight some information coming forward. Chief?
Good morning. Um, first, I wanted to call up the, um, CG Baker, Animal Services Division Manager, and talk a little bit about the animal shelter and Director Morgan, please.
All right.
Good morning, Dan Morgan, Director VMA and Number One and Animal Services, which is why we're here. I've got CG here to essentially inform y'all and ask the citizens, "We need your help." Summer is usually a very bad time, uh, for overcrowding and heat-related stuff and animals running loose, so he's gonna tell you a little bit about the shelter and I want people to open their hearts and their minds and think about helping us.
All right.
Good morning.
Good morning, CG.
CG Baker, Division Manager for Animal Services. Um, so yes, like, uh, Director Morgan was saying, um, shelter, or the summertime is a very busy time for the shelters. Um, and we see a lot of animals running loose. Uh, you know, the kids are home a lot more, so they're letting the animals run out. Um, and then of course, you have, adoptions are lower during this time because a lot of people are on vacation, so the last thing they wanna do is bring a new pet into the home. Um, because of all of that, uh, we see that our shelter is staying full, uh, like many other shelters in, in this area. Um, so we're asking that the public, you know, a couple of things. Uh, if you're interested in adopting a pet, please come see us. Uh, we definitely need to get some dogs out of the shelter and into loving homes. Um, but also be a, you know, responsible pet owner. Make sure you're keeping your dog up. Make sure it's secure. And then of course, when it is, um, you know, outside and that you're keeping it secured, but, uh, also that you're providing it shelter and water and things like that so that we're not having to take in a lot more animals, uh, than, that's needed. Um, just to kinda give some numbers, the first seven days of this month, four of which we were closed for the holiday, we took in twenty-seven dogs. Our shelter can only, uh, we only have fifty-four runs, only fifty-two of which can be used. So twenty-seven dogs in that short of time, um, I mean, on top of the dogs we already have. You know, we went into a holiday weekend at, you know, fifty-one dogs. So, um, that's des, you know, desperately, we need to get animals out and into homes. And of course, if you're missing a pet, please come see us. Let's get them reclaimed as quick as, you know, possible. And, um, so yeah, just wanted to bring that awareness.
So I have a question for you. So do you do foster?
So we do not do fostering through our shelter license, so, um, because our shelter license, we're actually, uh, regulated by the state. And so, and there's a whole list of requirements to do a foster program. Um, the last thing we wanna do is be in violation and then we shut down.
But you do have relationships with those, tell them about those.
Correct. So we do offer, um, people that are interested in doing fostering, um, we have a large number of rescue groups that we work with. And they are always willing to take animals from us, but they need people to foster. Um, so we can get people in touch with those rescue groups so that they can become approved foster homes. And, uh, and then we always tell people, you know, once you're an approved foster, just tell them like, "Look, I wanna, the, the animals I'm gonna foster, I want them to come from Rockdale." And, uh, that helps us out too.
Okay, all right. So that's the avenue.
Yeah, exactly.
All right, well, listen, um, there's a lot going on at our shelter and I think it's good for you to come in and give us periodic updates, particularly during this summer heat. You talked about the number of stray animals that are moving throughout the community.
Yes, sir.
But the opportunity for people to adopt, and if they're interested in fostering, they can come in, you can link them up with those agencies and that, um, do foster in terms of animal foster. CG, what would be the last comment you would like for the public to know about what's happening over at Animal Services?
Um, you know, we're, we're making a lot of changes over there. Uh, we've got a beautiful, expanded, new facility. Um, we are now, you know, for sixty dollars, you can adopt a dog, but that, uh, comes, they, they come spayed and neutered, microchip, rabies shot, parvotisemper vaccine, boratella, deworming. Um, so, I mean, it's a great value. Uh, and then the last piece of advice I would like to say, um, is with the responsible pet ownership, please, if you're out shopping, you're running into the grocery stores, things like that, do not take your pets. We have had a number of animals being pulled out of vehicles, um, because they're being left in the vehicle, uh, for, you know, forty-five minutes, twenty minutes, an hour, uh, you know, and it, it gets hot. Yeah, so please leave them at home so they can be safe and so that we don't ultimately end up with them.
Well, and not just that, but you talk about the life of the pet and the life of the animal. It is hot in a vehicle. You go in, if I go to my vehicle now, the first thing I do is roll the win, windows down to allow some of the hot air, air to escape the vehicle before I even turn on the AC. You can imagine leaving a pet, a dog or a cat in a vehicle while you run into the store and usually we don't never just run into the store. You're gonna be in there for a minute anyway. You're gonna get distracted about something you didn't have on your list. At least that's what happens to me. But, um, the health and safety of the pets is what we're talking about. Give them your address, your operating hours, and a best contact number. CG, if you would, please.
Okay. So our address is fifteen oh six...
I'm gonna get you to speak in that microphone before you leave today.
Fifteen oh six Rockbridge Road, Conyers, three oh oh one two. Uh, the phone number is seven seven zero two seven eight eight four zero three. We have a website, um, so it's rockdalecountyanimalservices.org. And we're also active on Facebook. Um, and then our hours of operation, the building is open Monday through Saturday, eight to five. The kennel is open, uh, Tuesday through Saturday, one to four thirty. But of course, um, if those times don't work, we, we always make it happen. You know, we'll, we'll bring people in whenever they need to. I've had my crew meet people up there, you know, on even closed days. So we do whatever we can to get the animals out.
Commissioner Washington, Commissioner Williams, I have to tell you, the passion that CG has in leading our animal services, oftentimes he's been called in the wee hours of the night or the morning, and whether he responds or one of his officers responds, but they get the job done and the care of taking care of the animals at Rockdale. Can give him a round of applause.
Thank you.
Chief Sanders?
Yes, thank you. So we have a lot of, um, events going on this summer. Parks and Recreation, Director Redman, if you'd come up?
I believe we have a video. When I think about hoops after dark, I think about being able to push through all of the different trials and tests and all of the twists and turns that life brings when I think about after dark. In other words, when you go through something after going through the dark, you come into the light. Things begin to shine and happen for you. And I think the biggest takeaway that I wanna give you guys today is all about just straightforward talk about responsibility and decision-making. How many of you guys wanna play college basketball? Raise your hand. Raise your hand. I think I got more hands who wanna play college basketball than hands that realize what they wanna do for a career right now. Right? So if you wanna do something like that, play college basketball, if you wanna play professional basketball, if you wanna do anything as a career, anything that you're gonna have to do to support your family, because all of you guys are men, so it's on you to give support for your family. So I played basketball in high school and in college and I played one-year professional basketball. But the only way I was able to do that is by being a solid dude at home because the skills transfer. If you can do... So I played basketball in high school and in college, and I played one year professional basketball. But the only way I was able to do that is by being a solid dude at home, because the skills transfer. If you can do something that you don't like to do, and you transferring to something that you want to do, transformation is easy.
So Hoops After Dark is an important program at Parks and Recreation, not only because it keeps the youth involved, it actually targets the youth and the teens in the community. And it's really easy to find yourself in the wrong place at the wrong time as a teenager, and get into trouble that's unwarranted or unintentional. So Hoops After Dark is in partnership with the District Attorney's Office. We're also partnering with Hills Academy to ensure that it's an inclusive activity, an inclusive program to everyone in the community.
That's great.
Wow, good program. Thank you.
First, I'd like to thank PR for highlighting that video. They did a great job of capturing the...
Good-looking video, absolutely. The first session. Give PR another round of applause.
They do such hard work, and they're behind the scenes, so I just want to say thank you, Director Memcier and your team, for capturing that first session of Hoops After Dark. We are getting ready to start our second session of it, and this is in partnership, this is a grant that we have from Yale. You've heard this acronym several times, Youth Intervention, Enrichment, and Learning by Design. So again, it's by design, and it's to make sure that we're providing a place for our young people to come to, keep their minds occupied, and to drive their minds in intentional directions. And yes, it's through the game of basketball, but it's not about basketball, it's about life. It's about, you know, keeping them out of the streets, giving them something constructive to do, and as you saw in the video, we had some great speakers come before them to give them just some words of wisdom and some knowledge, and just to let them see these people standing in front of them. Even our retired basketball player, Dominique Wilkins, came and gave his time to come speak to the kids. So it's a great program, and we're about to start session two. As you can see, tryouts are July 24th through 26th. No one will be dismissed, it's just tryouts, it's more of an assessment. It's eight weeks of basketball, all the games are played at Johnson Park. The trial location would be at JP Card Gym, which is at 90 Harden Street, the time would be 6:00 PM. A lot of people saw the first session, and they said, how can I sign up? There you are, this is how you sign up, this is how you get involved to become part of this program.
Very good, very good.
So do you have any, anything for the girls?
It is coed.
It is coed?
Yes, ma'am, it is coed. We just did not happen to have any girls signed up at the time.
Okay.
So we're working on trying to recruit those young ladies to get them to play. That has been a challenge for us, even with just our regular basketball. You have to catch really all kids at a young age, and as they grow, yeah, because if you try to catch them middle school, high school, their interest is probably somewhere else. So just trying to capture them while they're younger to get them to come up in the program. Also, I'd like to add that this has really been a project led by Deputy Director Taha Wilson. She's not here today, but I do want to acknowledge her and the work that she's done with the program.
Let's give her a round of applause, yes. Absolutely. All right.
We also have this week, our second Friday wind down. Commissioner Washington is smiling. It'll be at Coster Mill Park. The event starts at 6:00 PM to 9:00 PM.
And you tweaked it a little bit, too, from the original.
I did tweak it just a little bit. This time, there will be a $5 admission per car, per car.
Only for the vehicles?
Only for the vehicles.
Okay.
So I mean, just four people in the car for $5.
You can't beat that.
$1.25 to come out to the event. The setup would be much like the first, there would be a jazz band playing, great atmosphere, great conversation, wine tasting as well. So we look forward to everyone coming out and joining us for the second one.
I'll tell you, the positive feedback from your very first one, Director Redmond, was just overwhelming, and people are anticipating this next event, and I think even with the $5 per vehicle is a minimal, just a nominal fee...
Yes.
To offset some of what we're doing out there.
Can I pay my $5 now? Can I go into a meeting now?
$5, that's...
Expediential interest.
Save my seat, my own parking.
Yes, sir. Thank you, guys, for your support, as always.
Thank you, Director.
Thank you.
Chief Sanders, who's next?
Thank you. Next, we have Executive Director Holmes to come up and talk about an event for Friday.
All right.
She's the star of the show today.
She's the star of the show today, in a good way.
Yes.
All right, Executive Director Holmes.
Good afternoon, and we do have a flyer. Chairman, Madam Commissioners, this is the sixth year that we've done this, we've been doing it since 2017, and this is our annual Rockdale County Employment Summit. It is going to be hosted this year at Rockdale Career Academy, so we're excited to do that. I want to say the very first one is at Rockdale Career Academy. We went through COVID, we actually did it virtual a couple of years ago, we brought it back, and this year, from 10:00 AM to 2:00 PM, we are hiring. We right now have 42 jobs posted on our website. On an average, Chairman, Madam Commissioners, we run over 100 vacancies, on average, in terms of Rockdale County employment. So we do have some of the departments that are listed up here, but we're going to have representation from all of our departments. So if you want to come and hear, that includes public safety, about hiring opportunities, what's going on, and we're going to be hiring on the spot. So we did that last year, this is a big deal. We also have Georgia WorkSource that's going to be there, so they're going to be working on resumes, we're going to do Address for Success, we're going to talk about career readiness, and we want people to come out and see all of the opportunities that we have in Rockdale County. So Friday, July 14th, it's from 10:00 AM to 2:00 PM. The address is listed right there on the website, on the website as well as up there, but the 1064 Culpeper Drive, Southwest Conyers, and that's 30094. If you have questions or need additional information, you can call our office directly, that's 770-278-7575. Claudette Ransifer is our recruitment and retention manager, and we just invite everybody to come out, see what opportunities we have right here in Rockdale County. So we are hiring.
Very good. I just want to take a moment and talk about what you mentioned, the Dress for Success portion of it, because you also stated that we're going to be hiring on the spot.
We are going to be hiring on the spot.
One of my walking partners just the other moment, who works as a recruiter for Delta Airlines, talked about a young man who came to the interview with a pair of cutoff shorts on, and he had to resend them out. I'm saying this on the open air because I want parents, mentors, teachers, coaches, preachers, everybody in the community to hear this. Don't send your child as a representation of yourself to look for employment improperly prepared, okay? Make sure they're dressing for success. First impressions are everything. You need to come like you're looking to get a job and be hired on the spot. You need to spruce yourself up, iron your shirt, get up early, be there on time. This old-school principles is foundational, that still work today. We've got over 100 positions she talked about that are open, and I often get calls, I'm sure the Commissioners probably get some of this, too, but I get calls from people all the time talking about their child or children looking for a job. Well, we're having an employment summit, and we're hosting it over, and thanks to the Rockdale County Public School System, because this is a collaboration with them, to be able to host it over at the Career Academy there off Parker Road on Culpeper Drive. But I want to make sure you're hearing what I'm saying about preparation, preparation, preparation. Make sure you get up early, be on time, dress, get yourself together, get your hair together, get your grooming together, make sure you get your clothing together. And this is a lot of time, parents today are somewhat reluctant to say this kind of stuff, and people are afraid to talk to their own children. Chairman, just put it out there, be there, we're going to hire you, want you looking good. When you look good, you feel good, and the opportunity for you to make a powerful first impression would be standing there waiting on you for an employment opportunity. Don't come in there looking at it kind of way. Absolutely.
Chairman, and also, and I mentioned it up there, but the resume. If you want, Georgia WorkSource will be there. If you want them to take a look at your resume, bring it up there, they'll give you ideas and suggestions and recommendations, so great opportunity for the community. Chairman, if you don't mind, I would like to take a point of privilege here and recognize one more employee, and this one is a big one, and I definitely think that we need to make sure that we acknowledge them. He oversees our water treatment plant, and so he, Vernoy Murray, and he is sitting here, and I definitely want to make sure that I list out what they receive, and he can tell us a little bit about this, but the water treatment plant under Vernoy Murray's leadership has received full certification from the State of Georgia Department of Natural Resources Laboratory as a certification division. So congratulations, Vernoy, and we can have you come on up. Tell a little bit about what this is and what this means for Rockdale County.
What this does is allow the water treatment plant to run its own chloroform bacteria test. We're required by the state to run 85 tests a month to make sure the water is safe.
Amen.
One of the things in water treatment we push is we're required to have a 42 chlorine residual at the first point in the system. So without chlorine in the water, and we test the bacteria, that's the only way we guarantee the water is safe. That's something we have to restore every two years. State come down, do a white blood test, make sure you got everything, and just where that's all to all in Rockdale County come as a team, because when it gives demand, you got to have, we have to come and ask for it. So we have these POs, this would happen.
Well, thank you, Vernoy. Let's give Vernoy another round of applause. Absolutely.
Today is all about employee recognition.
Yes.
All right, thank you, Chairman, Madam Commissioners.
And thank you, Executive Director, and thank you to Vernoy and the team out at our water plant, because I just saw a story just a couple of days on the news about another community that is experiencing some problems as it relates to the water plant, and the fact that this certification that he has and that our team have out at our plant allows us to do our own in-house testing frequently and constantly to make sure that we're looking out on behalf of the citizens of Rockdale County. You think about our water, all of us use our water in one way or another, that's very, very important. That's a big job. The water plant runs 24 hours every day. Give them another round of applause.
I promise I'm almost done. And next, I wanted to just provide a quick update on the transit, intra-county transit plan. So we have still, that is still in progress, I'm actually on the committee for that. The second survey is up and running on the website, so we already did one, this is the second one, it'll be in the July water bills, and we'll also have opportunities to give input at the wind down and also at Toastmaster meetings. So we have narrowed down the plan to sites within surrounding the city of Conyers based on the initial feedback, but there still is opportunities to provide more feedback and give your input. We have the next open house also scheduled for August 29th, so you'll see more flyers on that to come, but just want to remind everyone to get out the surveys, you know, we need input.
Very good. Well, Chief, I appreciate that update. I know both of the Commissioners were inquiring just a short while ago about where we are with the status of our intra-county transit and mobility. We've been looking at it, it's not one of those snap-finger type projects that you can just snap a finger and it evolves and it's there the next day or two, but we are working with ARC and ATL and some of those other leadership teams in terms of regional transit. We appreciate this update. Hats off to Director Kelly for leading the charge, he and his team, making sure that when we bring a product to the citizens of the county, we're bringing a quality product. But more importantly, there's an opportunity for citizens, and that's what the Chief was talking about, to engage by participating in the survey and having the survey out, because a lot of times we want to make sure we know the citizens really want, but I want to bring, because when you talk about transit and mobility, there's a big cost involved with creating an operation like that, and we want to make sure that we're hitting the point and that people, the ridership will be there, and people are interested. A lot of folks talk about it. If we implement it and invest those types of dollars, whether it's grant funds or local funds, we want people to participate and engage. We're going to hear from them first, and we're encouraging them to take the surveys and be a part of it.
So is there a link on the county website to the survey?
Yes, yes.
Easily accessible?
Yes.
I haven't looked yet.
It's also going to be in the water bill, too, with a QR code.
Okay, very good. She says there's going to be an insert in the water bill with a QR code. Absolutely, very good. That's very accessible, very good. All right, Chief, what else you have?
And last is, this past weekend, I spent a little time, PR has a video on the fan event for the seniors.
Oh, yeah.
Taking care of the seniors.
Yes, chilling with the chairman.
Although a lot of our seniors may have central air or an air conditioner at their home, I think this box fan serves a purpose to help with the energy efficiency of their monthly electric bill, but it's really all about giving back and making a difference in Rockdale County, and we were blessed to be able to do that. So we're excited to do it, and this is all about beating the heat and keeping them cool throughout these summer months here in Rockdale County.
I thank you all for everything you all do every year, for Thanksgiving, Christmas, Easter, and now this year. God is good, and I thank you all, and God bless you all, and I pray that you all are able to continue to do all that you're doing for the citizens of Rockdale, and may God forever bless you all. I love you all from the bottom of my heart.
Yes, apparently it's really helpful to a lot of us, because apparently we are really looking forward for you guys to rally around us, to give us some benefit, and it helps us a lot.
I'm thankful to the county for affording me the fund. At this time, it's really needed.
I think it's good for Rockdale County because the seniors are on a fixed income, and a lot of things they can't afford, they have to make a decision between medicine, food, et cetera, so it's wonderful when you find someone giving back to the community, you have these seniors.
I think it's very important, and I appreciate it, I really do.
I think it helps ones, particularly the kids that are sick and that are elderly, and they need some air blowing right on them, and that's one reason I came over, is to get a fan for a friend that has cancer really bad and being very sick. And I think that's very nice of Mr. Austin Ness, but you do that.
This is what we do. We care, we give back in Rockdale County. With all of these volunteers and the people that were a part of making this happen, we're blessed to be a blessing.
Thank you to all of the folks who came out to support us. We had a lot of our employees and community people come out to give, and let me just tell you, the seniors we have in Rockdale County are the best in the state of Georgia. They are very appreciative of every single thing that we do, and they look out for each other as well. And I have to say, a big shout out to Deputy Director Susan Morgan over at Senior, y'all give Susan Morgan a round of applause. No one does it better. We, Commissioners, we had surplus fans, and of course, we've given them all out now. All of those seniors who came to the drive-through event at the senior center, we were able to give all the fans out, and then we were able to go over to some of the areas where the seniors live who don't have transportation, and we went literally door to door, and they were just tickled, pink, and appreciative of the fact that we were out in their neighborhoods, knocking on their door, handing them a box fan, and so it's just really, it brings joy to our hearts and being able to be a blessing to the people in Rockdale County, particularly our senior population. It was, when I got in my vehicle at the senior center on Sunday, it was 91 degrees on Sunday afternoon, and we were out in the street doing what we do, but they were so appreciative. That makes a difference when people appreciate what you do. When you show appreciation, people, the folks who are giving tend to give more, absolutely. Chief Sanders, what else do we have?
That is all I have today, thank you.
So I want to go to Executive Director Ruggles real quick, and any updates of now spin in terms of dates and upcoming meetings, or any particulars that we need to know?
Yes, there is. So we will be entering into summer recess after this board meeting today, and the next time we'll be together is Tuesday, August 1st at 10:00 AM.
All right, very good. Are we omitting anything, or are we missing out on anything? I want to make sure we're not. Okay, with that being said, is there any reason for executive session this afternoon?
No, Mr. Chairman.
Ladies and gentlemen, happy Tuesday, safe summer, thank you for coming out, this meeting is adjourned.